Thirteenth to order. And we always begin with a flag salute in a moment of silence. So Counselor Cox, did you want to give an entree to the flag salute?
Yes, please, thank you. This evening, we have the Boy Scouts with us, and they are here to earn a badge. And I would like to offer them the opportunity to lead us in the flag salute.
Just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for the moment of silence, Counselor Gilman.
So I'd like tonight's moment of silence to be in memory of my father, Bob Beantown Hanson. He passed away on October 22. He was a Korean War veteran Army sergeant. He was born in Arlington. He grew up in Belmont, and he spent his last 38 years in Orlando. He summered in Gloucester from 1968 to 1978. Here in Gloucester, he loved tuna fishing. He caught a 540-pound tuna off the Miss Carmen. He loved fishing with me. He was a great tennis player, a great boater, and he left. He led the Bass Rocks tennis team to several victories over the golfers, which was huge. And Avis Murray was always proud that my dad was on the team. He took me to many Gloucester High School football games, even though I was a summer resident back there. And he was just awesome. He loved Notre Dame football. He loved the Red Sox. He loved UMass football. And the celebration of his life is this Monday at my house. It would have been his 87th birthday. I welcome people that know me, know him, know our family, to come and join us for some of his most favorite food. The Snickers bars that you have tonight are in honor of my dad. It was his favorite snack. And we'll be serving all his favorite comfort food: mac and cheese, clam chowder, hot dog machine, popcorn, every piece of junk that you could imagine in honor of my dad. My dad was proud of me for being a public servant, so I think he would be proud tonight to know that we're all going to share our Snickers bars in his honor. And I thank you for this moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gilman, and thank you, Boy Scouts. That was really great. Next, order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is oral communications.
Oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council and state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident shall be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of the same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. So with those ground rules on, does anyone wishes to speak for oral communication? Name and address, please.
Karen Spencer, 67 Langsford Street.
Karen, before you start, could I ask a question? Are you going to speak about the fluoride issue again?
Yes, I'm going to exercise my freedom of speech.
We had a public hearing on that, and it was almost two hours long. And then last time you came to oral communication and gave us the same information again, are you going to continue to do that?
This is new information.
I'm afraid it's not new information.
It is new information.
But you can go ahead tonight, but I'm going to say, unless any counselor really objects, we're going to ask you not to take up our time with more fluoride stuff. We've given you plenty of time on this.
This is new information.
So go ahead tonight, and this will be it. Go ahead.
Counselors, allow me to remind you that Albert Einstein said, "No number of studies could prove him right, but just one could prove him wrong." On October 9, I presented you with two dozen studies documenting harm that had been published since the Gloucester non-binding 2015 referendum, plus several aggravations of science. Prior to the 2015 referendum, I submitted dozens of studies to the city council and Board of Health documenting harm. Just in October, six more items damning fluoridation policy as unsafe were published. Those October studies include: one, that found optically fluoridated water in Canadian communities increased the risk of low thyroid function in 18 percent of the population because fluoride interferes with iodine metabolism; one, that compared pregnant women in non-fluoridated and optically fluoridated Canadian communities, that found those in fluoridated communities had twice the fluoride exposure and doses consistent with doses in a study on Mexican women whose children had up to six points lowered IQ based on prenatal exposure to fluoridated salt; one, that found attention deficit disorder caused by prenatal exposure to fluoride specific to doses consistent with doses of populations consuming optically fluoridated water like in Gloucester. This is the third report from the National Institute of Health-sponsored 12-year project that seems to have been designed with the intention of showing no neurotoxic effect, but instead has repeatedly confirmed, "Low-dose prenatal exposure to fluoride causes subtle but permanent brain damage in many children." One, that found 37 percent of babies in fluoridated American communities consume fluoride in excess of the tolerable upper limits assumed safe per U.S. Guides. This put these children at high risk for dental fluorosis, which is associated with increased learning disabilities, broken bones, and kidney disease. A critique of a National Toxicology Program animal experiment that used the wrong rats, the wrong dose, and the wrong study design in order to manufacture a finding of no prenatal or postnatal effect, apparently in an effort to protect policy instead of people. I co-authored this peer-reviewed critique, published in a science journal. One, that confirmed doses consistent with doses in the general population of optically fluoridated communities causes an autoimmune response and cell inflammation that can result in skeletal wasting. Counselors, the water department is not qualified to act as pharmacists, and you counselors were not elected to play doctor or to rubber stamp the opinion of non-elected city advisors. You were elected to protect the rights of all residents, serve as responsible stewards of the environment, and act in a fiscally responsible manner. Please take the necessary actions to fulfill that duty.
Thank you, and thank you for respecting our request. Anyone else for oral communications? Come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address.
Yeah, hi. Jim Muldowney, 40 R., Englewood Road. And I'm here to speak about the road betterment process that we've started to undertake out on Englewood Road. And we're meeting with a lot of resistance from the residents regarding the city's ordinance. In effect, it seems like it's been changing and making it harder on the residents. And the city seems to be making, rather than acting as a partner with us in this, is just seeming to move the goalposts further all the time. We're required to raise a petition fee of 75 percent of the abutters. And we're told that other roads that have been recently repaved were not required to raise this fee. And the fee is nonrefundable. So if we do undertake this and are unable to reach the sufficient number of abutters to vote in favor or sign in favor, then we will, then the city just keeps the petition fee. And the, it's just, people don't feel like they're being well-served for their tax dollar, for the services and the amount of consideration that they're getting from the city. And it's making it tough. At one time, not too long ago, I know, the city would put up half of the funds for the restoration of these failed roads. And now they've done away with that, and now it's up to the abutters 100 percent. Another thing is on the, when we do, when the city, if we do have this petition for this determination, feasibility determination, then we have to have a meeting of residents on a certain date, at a certain place, at a certain time, and we need 75 percent to show up. And, I mean, I can easily envision where we, we recently had, just had the meeting on the petition fee, and we had a good turnout, but we did not come very close to 75 percent. And if we are required to do this for the final determination, I can easily see us coming up short, say 73, 74 percent, and now our petition fee is gone, and we are not allowed to pursue the matter for two years. So it seems like a lot of these parts of the ordinance are just very restrictive. And just to let you know, we're trying to go by the book here, but it's not very popular at all. And we'd just like to know, why has, why are these, obviously, we know why. The city's trying to save money, but like I say, the residents feel like they're paying plenty of money, and they're just not getting the return and the cooperation that we like to see.
Thank you. We do have quite a bit of data on how to go about doing this, and we'll be glad to work with you to help you figure out the proper procedure.
I think we have the data.
So we will get, we'll get back to you on this.
We will. Okay. If you guys can, if you can, any assistance you can lend.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for oral communication? Name and address for the record.
Cheryl Silva, Englewood Road in Magnolia. I'm here in support of Jim and the Englewood Road Association that's been working to try to get this petition moved forward along with Lake Road. My question is, the DPW has determined that it's non-reparable, Englewood Road at this point, so they have stopped repairing any of the potholes. My question is, what can we as residents do to bring that forward and do some repairs to it to get back on the DPW's list, to get the potholes repaired? We're coming up into snow plowing season. That always means, come springtime, it gets much worse. So is there some way, is there some relief that we could get to bring the road at least up to repairable condition so we can get some help getting the potholes repaired? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for oral communication? Just name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patricia Ives, and I live on 8 Lewis Court. Patricia Ives.
Just like this, into the microphone.
Patricia Ives, 8 Lewis Court. So I have lived in Lewis Court and Gloucester for 20 years, and I'm a registered voter and have been actively involved in voting. My next-door neighbor has had a wooden picket fence that's six feet within the guidelines according to your inspectional services. So according to your inspectional services online, do you need a permit, a building permit to build a fence? If the fence does not exceed six feet in height, does not exceed, then a building permit is not required. The fence can be put right on the property line. Although it is customary to face the good side to the fence to the abutting property, it is not a requirement. So recently, my neighbor had a fence that deteriorated, and he decided to build an eight-foot fence in violation of this inspectional service code. I contacted, on November 1, I contacted the building department and spoke to a local building inspector, who stated that he went down there as he had gotten previous complaints. He is aware of it. He spoke to the welders, the builders, everyone is aware of it. It can't be more than six feet. As they continued to build, I contacted the building inspector, who stated that, "We need to give them some time to see if they can resolve it." So here is my question to all of you. Why, at the inception of building an illegal structure, is an immediate cease and desist order not issued? Why isn't the building brought into code and then allowed to continue? Why do we wait until an illegal structure is erected and then have it modified? This makes no sense to me, and it shouldn't to you either. I've given some pictures to Dana and hope that she would actually distribute them to the city counselors of the fence in question. I want to thank you for your, and if you put the two rulers that I've included, and you put them on top of each other, you'll see the dimensions of it being two feet over the requirement. So hopefully, you can look at, looking at this process and knowing that it's flawed and change it and address it. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for oral communications? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item of business.
Next item was a presentation. Is he not here tonight?
Maybe not. Maybe we'll have it next time. So we'll have the presentation on the municipal energy aggregation next time. Next item.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor LeBlanc, new appointments.
Thank you. We have three new appointments this evening. The first is Committee for the Arts, Avery McNiff. Avery, how are you? Just want to stand and wave to everybody so we can see who you are. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Avery McNiff to the Committee for the Arts, term to expire 2/14/22. An iso move?
Second.
So Avery grew up in Gloucester. She graduated from Gloucester High School in 2008, studied art history, and now works for Art Haven. Her goal is to make art more accessible to youth and connecting art with education. So Avery stood before us last week at ONA, and, you know, she's over there working with David, and I think that there are, she's going to do very good things for the Committee for the Arts.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, Avery, for volunteering.
Next, we have the EDIC. Jerry Oppenheim. Hi, Jerry, how are you? Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Jerry Oppenheim to the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation, term to expire 7/1/21. An iso move.
Moved and seconded.
And Jerry is to represent low-income folks. He's been a great part of his career as an attorney for a legal advocate, so his experience in the energy field is, and skills, is going to be a great volunteer and commitment to the EDIC.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Thank you, Jerry, for agreeing to serve.
And next, we have the Stateful Park Advisory Committee. And Ordinance Administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council appoint Craig Anderson to the Stateful Park Advisory Committee, term to expire 2/14/21. An iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Craig, stand up, bud. How are you? So all you guys may recognize Craig. He was here a few years ago, and he did the little kiosks up in Dogtown where you could swipe your smartphone over and, and your, what's it called?
Query. QR.
QR code, yeah. So he's 20 years old. He's going to volunteer for a city board commission. I think it's great. Stageful Park Advisory is a great committee to be on, and it'll bring a little youth into the committee. And also, maybe he has some visions of what he wants it to look like, and his generation wants to look like when they become our age. Not that we're old, but you know what I mean.
We're lucky to have volunteers like Jerry, and Avery, and Craig. Simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Thank you very much, the three of you. You are officially confirmed. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Yes, are there any items that counselors wish to pull from the consent agenda? And do we have a supplement?
Unanimous.
Unanimous consent agenda? Is there any items that counselors wish to pull from either of those? Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask that we remove item number three under standing committee meetings, specifically P and D of November 7, 2018.
Any others? Okay, with that removal, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda and the unanimous consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Counselor Gilman?
Specifically, we had a small Scribner error related to the topic of the memo from council on a technical correction to the adult-use marijuana ordinance. I'd like to recommend that we strike the word deleting and add the word inserting to the, on page one of three on the minutes. An iso move.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, just for counselors' information. So in the minutes, when we get to the committee reports, this will be one of the things that Counselor Gilman reports on, but by amending it now, she's just making that technical correction, which it just is a typo, basically. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that amendment, we can accept those minutes as well? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, next order of business.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of October of November 8.
Counselor Cox, or, yes?
Because I was not in attendance at that meeting, I will hand it over to the vice-chair, Counselor Memhard.
Counselor Memhard.
Thank you. And in deference to our chair, we managed, and you were commemorating an important event, so that was appropriate. Yep. And also, thank you to Counselor O'Hara for stepping in to share on the committee's duties. We have two quick items before our public hearing agenda tonight. The first, committee recommendation on a motion by Counselor Hecht, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Our Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass. General Law Chapter 4453A a state grant for the Massachusetts Cultural Council in the amount of $8,500 to the Gloucester Cultural Council for the purpose of supporting fiscal year 2019 local cultural projects in the city of Gloucester by the Gloucester Cultural Council. The grant period is from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, and I so move.
Moved and seconded. Any commentary?
Only that this is an annual grant, which is received by the city with no match, which in turn is distributed for the accounts on behalf of the Gloucester Cultural Council.
Great. So with the receiving of a grant, it's a simple majority? So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Next item.
Our second item tonight for Budget and Finance on a motion by Counselor Hecht, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, 2019 SA 9, in the amount of $1,400, from the city clerk dog license receipts reserved for appropriation fund, transfers to the general fund account as noted, to the general fund city clerk other expenses account as noted, for the purpose of funding the purchase of a high workload color printer. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Want to make any description?
This is a well-supported request from our city clerk's office to purchase a new high workload color printer, as that department has two problematic printers at this time, one aging out and the other that is not fully functioning. And the city clerk's, the clerk's department has obtained, which had been previously obtained when it was surplus from another city department. So this is a well-deserved appropriation.
Any questions or comments from counselors? It's a supplemental, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, I just want to point out that the roll call is not Counselor Cox. It should have been Ken Hecht on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Counselor Hecht is first, then.
Counselor Hecht?
Yes.
Counselor Hoagrim?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lundberg?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Supplemental appropriation, 2019 SA 9, in the amount of $1,400, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of November 5.
We have no action this evening out of Ordinance Administration. Just one public hearing after the.
Thank you, Counselor LeBlanc. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of November 7.
Okay, Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. The Planning and Development Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council permit the withdrawal of a special counsel permit application, special counsel permit 2018-008, East Main Street, number 116, MAP 59, Lot 53, GZO, Section 2.3.1, Section 8, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units, 3.2.2, distance between principal buildings, and 3.2.2, minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum open space per dwelling without prejudice. An iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you have any comments on this one?
We received a letter from Attorney Sal Frontero on November 1, 2018, on behalf of the applicant, and he requested a withdrawal.
Thank you. So just a simple majority for this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Next order of business.
Next order of business is a public hearing, 2018, 055, special city council permit, 004, Main Street, number 189, MAP 8, Lot 27, conversion of a three retail and three residential unit building to a two-and-one-quarter residential unit building pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 2.3.1.7, 3.2.2A, and 3.1.6B, to alter a non, alter, expand a non-conforming structure and exceed maximum building height.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First recognized, Counselor Hecht.
Under Massachusetts General Law 268A, I declare that I am the owner
Under Massachusetts General Law 268A, I declare that I am the owner of the subject property and therefore recuse myself from this public hearing.
Thank you, if you'd just step away from the dais. Thank you. So I'll open the public hearing, and I will say that the council is in receipt of an email dated November 9th, 2018, from Attorney for the applicant requesting withdrawal of the special counsel permit application without prejudice. And so Counselor Gilman, if you could make an order, a motion to withdraw?
I move to permit the withdrawal of a special counsel permit application, special counsel permit 2018-004, Main Street, number 189, MAP 8, Lot 27, conversion of a three retail, three residential unit building to a two retail, four residential unit building pursuant to GZO, Section 2.3.1.1, seven, sorry, comma, 3.2.2, Section A, and 3.1.6, Section B, to alter, expand a non-conforming structure, exceed maximum building height, and seek dimensional variances in the CB district without prejudice.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. This is just a simple voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Then this matter is closed. And Counselor Hecht, you can return to the dais. Welcome back. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is public hearing, 2018, 056, tax classification in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5, Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-26, to determine the percentage of the local tax levy for the fiscal year 2019 to be borne by each class of real and personal property.
Great. I'll open the public hearing, but before we ask for those speaking in favor and opposition and so forth, I would ask Nancy Papas, our assessor, to give us a brief briefing on what this is all about. We do this once a year at this time. It's required by state law, and we always appreciate the clarity with which you walk us through the process, Nancy. So if you wouldn't mind, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Nancy Papas, Principal Assessor. There are four options to consider as part of the tax classification process, none of which change the total tax levy. A residential factor must be adopted. This factor determines the share of the tax levy that each class of property will bear. An open space discount, a residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption may also be considered. However, we have no parcels classified as open space to apply a discount to, and the mayor has not chosen to adopt either the residential or small commercial exemption. So the focus this evening is really to determine whether or not you want to shift a portion of the tax levy from one class of property to another. The values, assessed values this year were approved by the Department of Revenue on October 11th, and they are noted on page four. The residential class makes up 90.27% this year, and commercial, industrial, and personal property, 9.73%. The taxable value of the city increased 5.53% from fiscal 18 to fiscal 19, and based on the sales analysis, the residential class as a whole increased 5.42%. Property types, different property types within the residential class saw increases between 1 and 7.7%. The commercial class increased 1.6%, and industrials saw a nominal increase of .2%. Page five shows the parcel counts and assessed values of each class from 2006 to the present. And page six shows the historic shift factors adopted over the years, and it's the underlying residential factor that's associated with the shift factor that you will be voting on this evening. Page seven shows the calculation of the maximum allowable levy. It starts with the fiscal 18 levy limit. Added to that is the prop two-and-a-half increase and new growth, which results in the fiscal 19 levy limit. To that, the debt exclusions are added, Paul's Hill, CSO debt exclusion, and the water debt exclusion, which results in the fiscal 19 maximum allowable levy. That figure divided by the total value of all parcels results in a tax rate factor of 12.73, a factor of 1 for fiscal 19. A factor of 1 would mean the same tax rate for all classes of property. Any other factor other than 1 would shift a portion of the levy to a different class. Page eight shows the approximate tax rates that result from the various shifts to the CIP class, and the maximum shift allowed by the state is 1.5. Page nine shows a comparison of levies by class at various shift factors. The tax rates are approximate and may differ slightly once the recap is completed. The far left-hand column on this page shows the difference in the levy that each class will bring in after a shift. Page 10 shows the changes in tax dollars for properties valued at different levels at various shifts. It shows the savings to the residential parcels and the increase in tax dollars that would be paid for CIP taxpayers. This year, the average single-family home is valued at 585, 495. The median is 423, 200. So if you look at the $500,000 value property at last year's shift of 1.03, it would be a $20 saving annually to the residential taxpayer, while the CIP taxpayer would pay an additional $190. And in that same column at the maximum shift, the residential taxpayer would see a savings of 340, where the CIP taxpayer would pay an additional $3,180. The remainder of the packet explains the open space discount and the residential and small commercial exemptions, which are not viable options this year. I do want to point out that through the assessors' department, we do offer personal exemptions which differ from these, and we are accepting application for those at this time. So these are credits toward the tax bill for qualifying individuals who, where the property is their domicile and they meet the state requirements such as a senior exemption or a veteran's exemption. The deadline for these is not until April 1st of 19. So if there are any questions and taxpayers want to consider applying for one of these, the assessing staff can assist in that, either over the phone or in the office. And if there's any questions about the information presented, I'll do my best to answer.
Great, thank you. I think we can, you'll be available to answer some questions a little later. Anybody have any questions right at this second for Nancy? Counselor Cox?
I'm sorry. Off the top of your head, do you know what our neighboring communities are doing?
The informa, whether or not they shift, Counselor Cox? The information that I have from the state was not updated this year, so I have the figures from fiscal 17, basically in terms of what other communities did in that year. So the town of Essex, Hamilton, Ipswich, Manchester, and Marblehead were all a factor of 1, Rockport a 1. None of those chose to shift, but closer neighboring communities, Beverly, Salem, and Danvers, all did shift. Beverly had a 1.67, so on the upper end. Salem was 1.65, and Danvers 1.36. Lynn also on the high end, 1.75.
Thank you.
Other questions right now for Nancy? Counselor Gilman?
Just a detail, but can you tell us how the seniors and the veterans would be notified of this April 1st date?
That information is on the back of the tax bill. We have, we grant about 350 a year, so if you're already in the queue, we do send out reminder letters where we do have a lot of elderly exemptions that are granted through the department. Our webpage has a lot of that information on there as well, and the applications. Occasionally, we're asked to do little seminars at, you know, local banks or things of that nature, which, which help to bring awareness to the fact that these are available to the public. And we obviously let people know whenever they're in the office inquiring about taxes, their assessed value or what they're paying in taxes, we always offer whatever exemptions are available. Not everyone will qualify, but a lot of times, something may work out for somebody, and it's a little bit of assistance that, that certainly helps people on an annual basis.
Okay, I think that's all for right now. If you'd stand by, that'd be great. So we're going to have, we're going to hear from the public on this now. Our typical routine is we have a proposition, and then we ask for people who are speaking in favor and those who are speaking in opposition. This is just a slight, slightly different. Our current tax rate is a slight shift from residence, residential to business. Historically, the city of Gloucester has shifted from residence to, to business over the years. That, that number has, the amount of the shift has been declining. So for the last couple of years, we've been at 1.03 of a shift, which means that the, the business tax rate is slightly higher than the residential tax rate. I think as Nancy pointed out, and it's important for everybody to remember, the overall pot of money that we get is unchanged by this. It's which of these classes bears a burden, or how, how we allocate that burden to each of the classes. As I said, we've been at 1.03 for three years, I think, and the, two years. And before that, it was 1.06.
Eleven.
For 11 years. Thank you, Counselor Cox. And so the question now is, are we going to change, because we have to vote on that on this tonight, go to maintain the status quo or go to a 1.0, which means that the businesses and the residents would be taxed at the same rate. So I would say that we would, in terms of conducting the public hearing, we'll first, we'll hear from those who are in favor of going to the 1.0, which means the same tax rate for residents and for businesses. And if anyone would like to speak in favor of that, please come forward. Again, we're, it's, it's a little different than how we normally do this. We don't have a chief presenter, so we're going to take all comers, and I'm going to try and enforce the three-minute rule, but we'll try and be as flexible as possible so everyone gets heard. So this first is for those who wish to speak in favor of an equal tax rate for both businesses and residents. So go ahead and name and address for the record, please.
Henry L. Cape Ann Chamber of Commerce. I can't do this in three minutes, but I'll do it as quickly as I can. Good evening, President Lundberg and City Councilors, and thank you again for this public forum on such an important topic affecting the future of this great region. I'll begin by saying the Cape Ann Chamber and our 900 business members is in full support of the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendation to eliminate the higher business tax rate. Let me set the stage with a few facts. Gloucester's CIP factor at 1.03 stands as the lowest differential rate in the Commonwealth, and its effect on small individual homeowners, as you heard, is low, about $20, about half a tank of gas for the $500,000 property owner, and about 10 times that for an equivalent business owner. Most Massachusetts communities, 237 of 351, do not have a higher business tax, including our neighbors of Essex, Manchester, Rockport, Ipswich, and our larger communities, including Newburyport. As we just heard from Nancy, the tax rate is actually going down, mainly due to increase in overall residential property value, while the business base is about the same as last year. Even at the Unity CIP rate, the tax rate declines by 24 cents, a 4-cent differential compared to staying at the current rate of 1.03. The elimination of the tax shift is less about the relatively small financial impact on our residents and corresponding benefit to the business community, and much more about the message it sends to all businesses, especially those that may look to relocate here, that Gloucester is business-friendly and that we are encouraging new business growth. With new businesses come new jobs, new residents, a broader tax base, and increased tax revenue, enabling the entire community to prosper. Will a CIP rate of 1.03 versus 1.0 make a difference in a business decision to move here? Maybe not. But it is a much cleaner and more impactful message to simply say that we do not have a higher business tax rate. We will hear from some tonight, perhaps, that the removal of this tax factor will not help us attract new business. We disagree. Indeed, we can say with certainty that removal of the factor will give us a strong selling point for encouraging new business to relocate here. I will talk about a new and exciting business marketing strategy as, as part of these remarks. Gloucester's overall economic condition is mixed and continues to be at a critical crossroads. Going into year three, the excitement around the arrival of the Beaufort Hotel may be fading, but its impact on the local economy continues to grow. And there has been much positive news since we met here last year, including UMass's substantial investment in the Marine Station, important new development at Gloucester Crossing and Blackburn Industrial Park, approval of the Fuller School redevelopment project, planned opening of a co-workspace business, and the grand opening of the Gloucester Marine Genomics Institute here on the harbor. GMGI in particular has the potential to draw and spin off substantial technology-related and supply chain businesses. With these new developments, we cannot become complacent and forget the serious challenges we still face in attracting new businesses to our area. Our island geography alone is a major impediment. We are not a drive-through community. Our water and sewer rates are high, housing is expensive, the harbor needs significant repair, we have many underutilized waterfront lots, and we remain impacted by the losses of major businesses, including Gloucester Seafood Processing and Gloucester Engineering. As we discuss this relatively small impact, we ask you to consider three main points. First and foremost, the city's business base as a share of its overall tax base has decreased an alarming 30% from 15% to just under 10% over the last 25 years, with 10% of this decline seen in the past six years. None of our North Shore neighboring cities have our unique legacy as the nation's oldest working harbor, still highly relevant today as Gloucester generally ranks within the top 15 of commercial port seafood landings in the country. However, municipalities just 10 miles away have significantly broader business bases. As we just heard, several of our neighboring municipalities do have a tax shift. All those municipalities also have a much larger business base. Beverly, 14%. Salem, 16%. Peabody, 21%. And Danvers tops out at a whopping 24%. They can afford a higher business tax rate. Gloucester cannot. Our business base is going down. Second, Gloucester remains and will always be a fishing community, but our business mix is changing. The visitor-based economy is growing and has led to substantial new investments like the Beaufort Hotel, which has entered, added significantly to the tax base. Your handout shows the funds from the city's local option rooms tax have increased by more than 60% from $500,000 to over $800,000 in just the past two years, due principally to a single business, the Beaufort Hotel. That's more than $300,000 added to our tax base. While this growth in our visitor-based sector is helping keep local unemployment slow, many new jobs are seasonal. Third and complicating matters is the projection by the UMass Donahue Institute of substantial population decline, about 15% over the next 20 years. The reason for this is straightforward. We are population-dominated by baby boomers. Our demographic challenge is made more difficult by a relatively high cost of housing, among the highest of any city on the North Shore. We are seeing a direct result of this in Gloucester schools, where our population has declined by more than 25% in the past 20 years. On the bright side, Gloucester has so much to offer and is incredibly beautiful and desirable place to work, live, and play. We are encouraged by the very fact that we are here this evening talking about these issues as part of a strong collaboration comprised of the city, the chamber, our business affiliates, local universities, and nonprofits. We are working together to turn these issues for, into opportunities for growth and regional prosperity. We must work, and indeed are working, to broaden our business base, not just by extending our visitor season, but by expanding our core maritime-related businesses and seeking to attract traditional service engineering and manufacturing businesses. We have exciting news. As an outgrowth of our Cape Ann Innovators Collaborative, or CAKE, forum, we are attracting many leading North Shore innovation organizations and leaders to regularly visit our region, including the North Shore Technology Council, the North Shore Innovation Incubator out of Beverly and the Cummings Center, and the North Shore Alliance, to name a few. Save the date, January 31st. Our next CAKE forum will be on the stimulating topic of creative placemaking, the interdependence of economic. of economic growth and the arts. Further, with new leadership investment of UMass, we are launching a major new initiative to create a North Shore Blue Economy Coalition, focusing on creating jobs in the maritime industry. We are working closely with legislators Senator Tar and Representative Ferrante to develop a similar model, as has been recently implemented just 50 miles south of us, and has received over $900,000 in EDA grants, and is poised to leverage hundreds of millions of dollars in new offshore wind investments in the creation of blue economy jobs. We on the North Shore have similar opportunities. We must think regionally and strategically to promote those opportunities to encourage new business growth here. What is most exciting about this initiative is that Gloucester, as the North Shore largest port, is at the epicenter of this initiative. So, in conclusion, working together, we are collectively making progress in Gloucester's, in setting Gloucester's economic ship on a new and prosperous course. Tonight, we ask for your help in securing our business base and accelerating the arrival of new businesses to the city by voting to adopt the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendation to eliminate the tax rate differential. Not only is this a core element of an overall program for encouraging business growth and prosperity for Gloucester, but now at the 1.03 level, this differential more represents an unnecessary vestige from the past than it does a savings to our residents. As is being demonstrated by a single business, the Beaufort Hotel, the best way to grow city revenues while decreasing the residential tax burden is to work collaboratively to expand Gloucester's business base. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And yes, that was fine to go over the three minutes and we'll just make sure that everyone is equitably heard. So, anyone else to speak in favor of the tax rate being 1.0 and equal tax rate? Yes, sir. And name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Greg Bover, and I'm representing CB Fisk Incorporated. We're at 21 Conduan Road. And I think as many of you know, we are one of the finest pipe organ builders in the United States, and we enjoy an international reputation as well. I'm speaking briefly to encourage you to level the playing field. As you also know, businesses like CB Fisk, in these days of modern supply chains, can locate almost anywhere. We will never leave Gloucester. We've been here since 1961. New businesses may well take into account what the business climate is in our city. And it sends a powerful message, I think, if that business tax rate is the same as the residential rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else to speak in favor of keeping, of making the tax rate equal at 1.0? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Don Tarkott. I'm the general manager of the AmeriCold facilities here in Gloucester. We have two facilities that are located on the waterfront, one at Rose Square, one at 69 Rogers Street. The high business tax does matter to AmeriCold. By reducing the difference, you will allow and continue to invest in the competitive advantage of not only AmeriCold, but the other companies that are within the district. I urge the city council to reduce the business tax. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak in favor of the, keeping the business, making the business tax equal to the residential? Name and address, please.
Nick Pizzeny, 27 Dodge Street. Good evening to the council and everybody in attendance. My name's Nick Pizzeny. I've lived in Gloucester my entire life, other than five years in the Marine Corps. My wife, Kaitlin, and I own a business in Gloucester. Cape Ann Lanes used to be the place we'd go on date nights. Now, we're there pretty much every night. It's hard work, but we love it and we love being a part of our community. I'm happy to hear the council's considering this decrease. I'm sure some believe that businesses should pay a higher rate than residents. I understand that. I'd like to remind those people that we're all residents. Most business owners are residents as well. We live here, we work here, we play here. Like to also have you consider that even if the new rates are approved and become equal, there's a lot of other expenses and payments to the city that residents don't incur. So, in addition to more than $10,000 in property taxes that we pay, we pay for things like a dumpster permit for $100. $100 for fats, oils, and greases permit. $100 for a bowling lanes permit. $150 for occupancy inspections. $200 for food service establishment licenses. $800 for personal property taxes. $1,500 for liquor license. $2,400 for arcade game license. Some of these are important, but it's a total of more than $15,000 in checks payable to the city of Gloucester every year. Businesses contribute more to Gloucester and the economy than property taxes alone, and there's no place we'd rather work and live. And I hope you'll adopt the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the 1.0, equalizing the tax rate between business and residential? Yes, name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Kaitlin Pizzeny, 27 Dodge Street, co-owner of Cape Ann Lanes. I'm also, I'm actually speaking as the chair of the Next Generation Cape Ann, which is a group of young professionals that meet here in Cape Ann, and we work to not only network and support each other's businesses, but also to try and find ways to improve the future of Gloucester altogether. So, it's not just a business-minded group. We're also looking at community development, economic growth, schools, all of those things. And so, in such, as a member of that group, I personally urge you to adopt the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendations. I think it would be a very good thing for the city of Gloucester to attract new businesses that will attract hopefully other young professionals, which could be the lifeblood of this community. Other neighboring towns have done very well at this, Beverly, Salem, for instance. If we can become that same kind of entity, I think that would be very much in our favor as a city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person to speak in favor of the 1.0 equalization? Name and address.
Nick Osgood speaking. 159 East Main Street. It's the National Fish Seafood Tenet there that's ours. You know, the lower rate helps a great deal, and I don't, I'm not sure, you know, everyone takes into consideration how much of a difference it makes to have a balanced tax rate for residents as well as commercial owners. As an investor in real estate, I look specifically at communities that balance that equation. And when you invest in communities that don't have that balance, you're severely penalized. And it's a hard block to get over with tenants, when you have triple net-based leases and they're looking at their cost to operate. I think it's just very important that you do everything you can to keep the taxes down for commercial clients and commercial owners. So, clearly, I'm in support of the Budget and Finance's recommendation, and I'd like to see it go through. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next person to speak in favor of equalizing the tax rates to 1.0? Name and address, please, for the record.
Robert Gillis, 31 Saywood Street. Want to thank you all for your service to the city. There's not much that I can add that hasn't already been said, but I will say that in today's paper, I think there was a slight error that Nancy clarified. One statement that was made was that a flat rate would bring a slight increase of about $20 a year for the average homeowner, which is correct. But then it goes on to say that in, and, an equally slight savings for business owners, which is not correct. As was talked about earlier, it's about a tenfold increase over the residential rate as a result of the 1.03 differential. So, there isn't much more that I can say, except that business investment is good for Gloucester, it's good for the residents ultimately, and I think it's also just a matter of basic fairness. You've heard from young business owners like the Pizzenys with Cape Ann Lanes, as well as the larger business owners. It affects all of us, and I urge you to vote in favor of the Budget and Finance's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking. Next person? Name and address for the record. Thank you.
Ruth Pino, 82 Wheeler Street. So, I pay $6,500 in real estate taxes to the city of Gloucester every year, and it's going to save me $20 by having a shift. I'm happy to donate my $20 to support the business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Next person? Name and address for the record, please.
Meredith Fine, 20 Eastern Avenue. I'm a business owner here and a longtime resident and a member of the Government Affairs Committee of the Chamber. And I'm speaking in favor of the Budget and Finance Committee recommendation. I think to a certain extent, to a certain extent, we're talking about optics, how things look. And I agree with the previous speakers that it's really important that the city speak with one voice on welcoming businesses. I don't think it's really useful to say, "Well, you know, we've given businesses this, so we're gonna take away something over here and kind of balance things out." That doesn't really send a consistent message to the rest of the world. And the other thing I want to mention, which I forgot to bring with me, but there was a study by an MIT professor probably 10 years ago that looked at these balance, these tax classifications, and they concluded that they don't serve any useful purpose at all. They don't actually do anything. They don't encourage any kind of public policy. They really are a kind of a pointless exercise. And if you'd like a copy of that study from MIT, I'm happy to provide it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for speaking. Anyone else in favor of the 1.0 tax equalization rate? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes? So, that's what's on the table. We'll hear more from Budget and Finance in a minute, but currently, the rate is 1.03, which is a slight shift in favor of the residents. And I believe the administration has put forth that as their proposal, although it's up to the council to make the decision. So, if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of shifting the tax, some of the tax, from the residents to the businesses, as we have done all these years, you can speak now, please. Okay, there's no one here to speak in favor of that. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications on this matter?
Yes, we do. We have two communications, one from Olympia Palazola in opposition of the 1.0 tax classification factor, and I believe you received this email today. And also Kathleen Clancy of 78 Hyproples Road in opposition of the 1.0 tax classification shift, and you received that email also today.
Thank you very much. Do any councilors have questions for anyone who has spoken, either the assessor or anyone who has spoken in favor of 1.0, or we haven't had anybody speak in favor of 1.03, except the administration? Any councilor questions? So, with that, we'll close the public hearing and call for the committee report. My guest, Counselor Memhard, that honor falls upon your shoulders tonight.
The honor is on my shoulders, yeah. So, the Budget and Finance Committee voted on a motion by Counselor Hecht, seconded by Counselor O'Hara unanimously in favor of a residential tax classification factor of 1.0 for the fiscal year 2019, and I so move.
Moved and seconded. Before we proceed with that, I would like to offer up a, an amendment to that. I would like to propose amending that to the recommended shift to the 1.03.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So, now we have, we have those on the table. Yes. Counselor LeBlanc, go ahead.
So, I'd like to support the 1.03. As a small business owner myself, I know the burden, but we have a lot of elderly residents. We have a lot of fixed income people that live in this community that aren't able to, I don't want to say jack the price up of their, you know, what we do, but, you know, the cost of my materials goes up, so I have to adjust my hourly rate or my materials, and I pass that on to the people that I'm working for. Some of these people bought their homes years ago when the costs to live in Gloucester wasn't as expensive as it is now. They're elderly, they're on fixed incomes. What they get for their, you know, social security, whatever they're getting, that's it. They can't work overtime, they can't, you know, do a little side job or whatever you want to call it to earn extra money. This is what people have. The cost of living in Gloucester is going up. We just, this council recommended that the water and tax rate go up just recently, so that's going up. You know, these people that I'm trying to give a little bit of a tax relief are struggling to even just maintain their properties, let alone pay their taxes. You know, Counselor Lundberg spoke about, well, not him, but, you know, I want to speak about consistency. You know, we had the 1.06 for 11 years, so you knew what you were getting into. We changed it recently to 1.03. It looks like some of the council wants to change it to 1.0. Where's the stability in tax, you know, for a resident or a business owner? You know, what is it gonna be in two years when we do this again? Are we gonna change it again and then go back another two years? You know, I think we need some stability here. The 1.03 has only been in effect for two years. Let's see how that goes for a little while before we start changing things again. You know, I mean, I'm in favor of bringing businesses to Gloucester, but I represent Ward III, a working-class ward, that, you know, that I know a lot of people that struggle just to make ends meet. The increase isn't just only $20. It's based on your assessment, your assessment, probably is gonna go up this year. The values of homes are going up. So, you're gonna get hit with a higher tax bill if we even it out, and a higher assessment. When we did it a couple of years ago, mine went up a few hundred dollars. It wasn't just 20 bucks like we thought it was going to be. So, I'm gonna support the amendment, and I hope my other councilors do too, and take care of the people that are on fixed budgets that only have a minimal amount of income, where I'm able to go out and try to get as much income as possible with what I do. So, 1.03 for me.
Thank you. So, we've got the motion that was made by Counselor Memhard, that was then, then I've offered an amendment to 1.3. So, I guess what we're doing right now is we're talking about the 1.03 amendment, and we will take a vote on that as soon as everyone's had that chance to speak about it. So, anyone else want to speak to the amendment? Counselor Cox?
I actually have a question for Nancy, if that's okay.
Certainly. Nancy, would you mind?
Can you tell me if there's a max amount for the exemption for the elderly and/or veterans?
I have a chart, luckily. But there are a couple of different senior exemptions. One is $500 annually, and one is $175, and that's also available for the widows. The veterans typically need a disability in order to receive one unless it's a Purple Heart or some type of medal of honor, and those change kind of more drastically. So, the norm- So the normal, the most frequently granted one on the veteran's side is $400, but they can go up to a full exemption of the entire tax amount. Some of them are about $1,000, $1,250. So it really depends on the type of disability or if they're eligible for the full exemption. And then the legally blind is $437.50 on an annual basis.
Can you give me that number again?
The legally blind? $437.50 annually.
Thank you. Who picks up, if there are exemptions granted, who picks up that cost?
That's why we have the overlay account in some respect to cover that differential. The state does reimburse, but they don't reimburse for the total amount that we exempt. It was a point back in time where at that point they would exempt up to that amount, and anything that came on in future years would not be covered by the state.
So elderly exemption is $500 or $175?
Yes.
Off their?
Total annual tax bill.
Annual bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cox. Anyone else to speak on the amendment? Councillor Hecht?
I'm going to vote against the 1.03 amendment. These are really small dollars. I get that. It's $20 for a $500,000 home. But it's, to me, it's a, it's more symbolic and it's important symbolism. And it can actually have, as we say, $20 on a $500,000 property for a residential person. The relief represents $200 for a commercial property. But I want to focus in on something I think is really important. When I'm talking to my constituents, they're asking me, "Well, what are we doing to get jobs in here that are, that are job creators, high value, high income dollars? What are we doing for non-tourism dollars? How are we getting jobs in here?" And I really want to focus on the blue economy. We've got something that other cities and towns would absolutely love to have. And because in Maggie and Joe Rose's living room eight or 10 years ago, they came up with the Gloucester Marine Genomics Institute. And they came up with the academy first. And it's into its third year right now, where between 15 and 20 young people are graduated each year to build our young economy, to build our economy here in the sciences, in the marine genomics area. And then that was followed up a couple of years later with just the recent opening of the Gloucester Marine Genomics Institute, which brings scientists from all over the world. This is our chance. This is our chance to bring jobs. It's a new ballgame. If we get this right, it can mean incredible things for Gloucester. So what I think we need to do, there's, as all the people who spoke in favor of the 1.0, no one spoke opposed to the 1.0. But as many of the people relayed in the audience in favor of the 1.0, there's a roadshow going on, and there's a roadshow about to go on. And we have the opportunity to look back 10 years from now and say, "Wow, we had a piece, we did everything we could to get people to move from Cambridge and Boston and Peabody and Beverly, which are all much better located than us here at the end of the tracks. We're at the island." So I think that we have to give every single bullet that we can put in our gun to make this happen, to have companies move here, everything we can possibly do to create our new economy. And the cost, and the cost, as has been relayed, is on a $500,000 assessed value is $20 a year. That's $5 a quarter. That's $1.66 a month. And to take it to the ridiculous, it's 5.5 cents a day. So to me, I agree with Ruth Pino that it's way worth that $20 differential for us to really put all our eggs in the basket of making this happen and bringing technology and science companies and give every advantage to the people out there on the road trying to bring these companies to our city. So I'm voting against the 1.03 amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Holmgren?
I want to thank everyone who has come to the council meeting tonight to speak about this issue, especially to those of you who come year after year after year and who serve the community as business owners and as residents. I have talked with many of you about this issue, starting even before I decided to run for office. This is one of those difficult decisions that is guaranteed to leave someone dissatisfied at the end of the night, and I hate to make anyone unhappy, especially people like you who have served the community in so many ways. However, I intend to vote against evening out the tax levy, and we'll be voting in favor of the 1.03 percent shift. I will say, we are business-friendly in numerous ways. We have given out TIFs. Our DMO is terrific. Our community development and economic development departments and initiatives are terrific. I want to piggyback on Councillor LeBlanc's statements saying that our elderly people are not only living on fixed incomes, but they are often struggling to sell their larger homes and downsize. I must vote for the residents on fixed incomes who have talked with me, emailed me, and sent me messages who will soon be asked to shoulder the burden of things like new elementary schools. If this vote is symbolic, if we are going to send voters any message tonight, let it be that we have faith they will do the right thing when we go to build new schools, schools in sound buildings and something to attract business owners with young families from the greater Boston area who will infuse our economy with their own potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Holmgren. Councillor Gilman and then Councillor O'Hara.
Thank you, councillor. I'd like to piggyback on what Councillor Holmgren just had to say. We talk about jobs here and how important that is. But in order to have jobs here, we have to have people that can afford to live here. And regularly, I talk to people that look at the prices of our houses, the amount of taxes that we're paying, et cetera, and they're having a hard time finding homes to live in. I also spend the lion's share of my weeks, week after week, talking to people about potholes and trees and all the things that they're struggling with on private properties. And as long as our infrastructure continues, you know, it's been 20 years in my ward, in Ward IV, that we went through the betterments for sewers. So at this point, all the roads that were once okay 20 years ago are now really bad. Councillor Nolan's roads are worse than ours because he didn't have a lot of the sewers. So the roads that they're talking about tonight on Inglewood and the streets in Ward V are even in worse condition. And we continue, we understand that private road repair. We know our ordinance. We're trying to work on betterments. We're trying to be creative. But the bottom line is that the lion's share of the people that I have to deal with, National Ave, Finch Lane, Mackhamber, Juniper, are just not feeling the love right now from city services and the things that we are not able to afford. Not because we don't want to, because we just don't have the money. So I will be approving or supporting this amendment. It pains me to see the other side here tonight feeling the passion that I also agree with. But you know what? We need a new school at East Gloucester and Veterans. We need to start moving forward and working on our capital infrastructure. And without all of our residents, which make up 90% of our population and much higher in my ward, where I only have five businesses, it's really important that we get them behind us, rallying behind and have confidence. And it's, I know $20 for $500,000 home seems little, but it's a message. So that's the reason why I will be supporting 1.03 and supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor O'Hara. Did you want to speak next?
Thank you. I'll be supporting the 1.03, or 1.0, excuse me. And the reason why is, we need businesses. Our tax base is 90% residential, 10% businesses. I'm very cognizant of the seniors. I think Councillor Cox asked some very valid questions and got good answers, that there is ways to, for seniors to see savings. Our budget, we signed off, our council last year signed off on $189 million. Of that, $61 million in our schools, we're talking about building new schools. Our infrastructure clearly is decrepit, is falling apart. You don't need to look, you can look any place in our city. It's falling apart. Curing the problem is bringing businesses in. You go to the Rotary, as I said publicly at Budget and Finance, you go to the Rotary at 530, you see a mass exodus of cars going south. They're going to work. We bring, we bring one business, forget about bringing one business. We lose one business, we lose jobs. More than likely, they're residents from the city who are working there. We bring a business in, more than likely that business is going to hire local residents. More than likely that those dollars are going to be spent here in Gloucester. Those people who leave Gloucester, they're more than likely spending their money out of town. They're working in Beverly, Danvers, Woburn, Boston, you name it. They're traveling back and they're spending their money coming back into Gloucester. Beyond the traffic, which I've said publicly, we're getting very little help from our state. Traffic is a nightmare. I'm sure Don Turkard is seeing it. Gortons is seeing it as far as the truck traffic, how much that's costing. Councillor Nolan found that out with one of his neighbors on Conde Linn Road that moved because, one of the reasons why they moved is the cost of transportation. We need to be, we aren't Beverly, we aren't Danvers, we clearly aren't Peabody and Lynn as far as their proximity to Boston 93, 95. We aren't them. We're at the end of the road. We need to be a little bit better, a little bit shinier than the next guy. We need to lure a business. We need to start right here in this house and reduce the cost of the city doing business. We've increased labor in our city. We want to save residents money. Let's cut the bags for trash. We increase that. We increase water and sewer rates every year. We need businesses in our city. We need them badly. So I will be supporting the 1.03, or, excuse me, I apologize, 1.0. We need businesses. We need jobs for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got you down at 1.03, Jamie. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Sean, Councillor Nolan?
I'm going to be supporting the 1.03. Most of my ward is residential. Through the years of increases through the CSO, the debt shifts and unwarranted expenses that don't really relate to where they have to spend the money, the road conditions and the expenses it takes to go through the process of doing these. I know it's only a little bit for some people, but it's also for a lot of my residents. Enough's enough, and they're not getting what they need. I'm a businessperson as well. I understand fees. I understand permits. I understand the cost of operating a business, the cost of dealing with the city of Gloucester to cooperate with building a business. But as of right now, for my ward and my constituents, I will be supporting the 1.03 tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Nolan. Anybody else?
You know, I will speak. I, like the Budget and Finance Committee, I think 1.0 is the place to be. 1.3 is a step backwards. That was a unanimous vote this year. That was our unanimous vote last year. That was our unanimous vote the year before that. I think the fact that businesses don't get to vote, and politically, it's expedient for politicians to appeal to residential taxpayers is an unfortunate reality, and it ends up costing us in the long picture. It's a short-sighted step. You're saving a couple of bucks. You're costing the community long-term. It's very unfortunate. It's politically expedient, but it's short-sighted. And what we need in this community are jobs. We need businesses. We don't need 8% or 9% of a commercial industrial base. We need 15% or 20% of a commercial industrial base like Peabody or like Beverly. But we're at a disadvantage here on Cape Van. We have lots of wonderful things to celebrate. But being business-friendly, unfortunately, is not one of them. So I've counted the votes. Obviously, we're going to stay at 1.03. Dollar-wise, doesn't make a huge difference, as we talked about at some length before. We've spent a lot of time on this. We'll spend a lot of time on it again. But the fact of the matter is that we're not serving the needs of our community, the long-term job creation and the things that reduce our tax obligation in the big picture, long-term, by a vote like this. It's short-sighted and it's unfortunate.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Cox?
Thank you. So we all know that the factor of 1.03 is going to pass based on the opinions up here. This is, this is a double-edged sword for us because we buy a house as an investment. We want the values to increase. With increased values come increased taxes. It's not just a $20 savings on an average $500,000 home. It's not, because we also have the increase in the value. But we offset that with exemptions for elderly, veterans, and blind. We don't offer exemptions for middle class. We're told to work harder and get better-paying jobs or do what we can to increase our income to offset the taxes. And at the same time, businesses, you know, I could save a lot of money if I didn't have to commute outside of Gloucester. So increasing our business base is a great idea. Do businesses come here because we're at a factor of one? No, they come here because there's space available or that we have a good labor force or, you know, the possibility of schools being a good choice to bring in the labor force. I managed to buy a house that's amazing and affordable, and you don't see that, and I only bought it two years ago, and you don't see that on the market anymore. I've had people knock on my door and offer me $500,000 for my house, and I paid about $3,000 two years ago. Our housing market is small. Available space for businesses, can we increase it to 15%? Is it even possible? What do we have out there for inventory? There, all of these different factors run through each of our heads, and we try to be fair and we try to be reasonable. I walked in here today thinking I was going to vote for a 1.03 shift. I don't find that fair and reasonable. There's a lot of people that spoke tonight as business owners that I know are also residents and pay taxes. They don't rent, they own. So they're paying it in both directions. And, you know, Nick, you made a really good point with me tonight. All of those fees that you have to pay in order to be a business owner in addition to your taxes for your house and your taxes and everything else for your business. And you employ local people, you employ veterans, you know, I just, I think a factor of one is the fair and just thing to do. So I'm going to vote against the amendment.
So I offered the amendment, and so I'll just tell you why I did that, is two reasons. One is the, we have an issue in this, in our town. We have, you know, we are intent on increasing the business base and improving our job base when we're doing all of that. We also have a housing issue, a fairly serious one because of where we live. And where we live is on the coast, and what happens on the coast is the property values go up. So we're not just talking about the tax shift in a vacuum. We're talking about the fact that residential taxes rise just because of the market. And so we have to be mindful of that. And yes, this is all symbolic. And with due respect to the business community, I have to say, we are not complacent. This city, I've been on the city council now for five years, and this city is, does not have to look apologetically at any city for being business-friendly. We are totally business-friendly, and I think that deep down, you all know that. We are here for you 100% of the time. But we also need to take care of the residents, and if it's symbolic, I'm willing to do that, too. And so I, that's why I put up And so I, that's why I put up the 1.03. I know it's not a lot of money, but for some people it is a lot of money, and I don't want to be cavalier about $20. We just passed the energy aggregation, which can save people like 10 bucks a month off their National Grid thing. That's important for a lot of people, and we don't want to be cavalier about that. So I hope that councilors who said they weren't going to support 1.03 think about it again. And I think we're, unless anybody else has something to say on the amendment, we're going to vote on the amendment first, right? So, the amendment is to amend the Budget and Finance motion from a tax classification of 1.0 to a tax classification of 1.03. So that's the amendment before us.
Counselor Heck?
No.
Counselor Hoogrim?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
The amendment to the main motion to adopt a residential tax classification factor of 1.03 for FY '19 passes on a vote of five in favor and four opposed.
Thank you. So the motion is now amended. We'll go back to the main motion, and the motion as amended, we'll take the roll call vote. Motion as amended is now for a tax classification of 1.03.
Counselor Heck?
No.
Counselor Hoogrim?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
The main motion to adopt a residential tax factor of .996800 that equates to a CPI shift of 1.03 for fiscal year 2019 passes on a vote of five in favor, four opposed.
Thank you. Do we need to do a motion for reconsideration? Is that necessary, Mr. Dunn or Mr. DeSino? No, okay. In that case, we're done with this, and we'll move on to Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2018-57, Technical Amendment to Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section 5.314, Use Allowance and Special Permit Procedures Regarding Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers.
So I'll open the public hearing for this. Now, this is what we amended earlier tonight on the, the motion from Planning and Development. Counselor Gilman, is that right? Okay. So, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this motion? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Any council questions? And I'll close the public hearing, call for the committee report. Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Counselor. The Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.31, .4, use allowance and special permit procedures by deleting in the first paragraph the phrase "medical marijuana treatment centers," and I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Counselor Heck?
Yes.
Counselor Hoogrim?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor O'Hara?
First of the two. This one was done right.
Yes.
Counselor Cox? Counselor Gilman?
Yes. Okay, the motion to, for the technical amendment to Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.314, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Next motion, Counselor Gilman, and this is the one that we've already amended, so.
Exactly. So this one, we will make an amendment after I do the motion. Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 531.4, use allowance and special permit procedures, by deleting in the second paragraph the phrase "a medical marijuana treatment center as defined in MGL Chapter 941," or...
Moved and seconded.
I'd like to request an amendment on the main motion to strike the word deleting and add the word inserting.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Okay, now we can vote on the main motion. It's, now it's been properly edited.
Okay. Counselor Heck?
Yes.
Counselor Hoogrim?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Okay, the motion, the second motion on the technical amendment to Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.314, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, next order of business?
Next order of business, Public Hearing 2018-058, to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance, Sections 1.2, Purpose, Interpretation, Conflict, and Definitions, Section 5.1, Mobile Homes, Trailers, and Campers, and Section 5.23, Residential Land-Based Wind Energy Conversion Facilities, per the MUNI Code Ordinance Review and Recommendation.
Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak opposed? Any communications on this?
There are none.
Any council questions? And I will close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
Planning and Development voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance pursuant to the recommendations of General Counsel in a memorandum dated June 6, 2018, entitled "MUNI Code Ordinance Review and Recommendations," and I so move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. So just for councilors' information, as, as you know, we've, we've had a review of the municipal code, and Chip has been making, sending us memos with some of the requested changes, most of which, as is this one, is fairly technical in nature, non-controversial. But I'll ask Counselor Gilman just to explain what we're voting on, if you don't mind.
You articulated it perfectly. These were just things that no longer were appropriate in our MUNI Code, and it was recommended by our General Counsel to make these changes.
So unless anyone wishes to go into the details, I can, I think Planning and Development Chair can assure us that it's all okay. Yes? Thank you. So we'll have a roll call vote.
Counselor Heck?
Yes.
Counselor Hoogrim?
Yes.
Counselor Blank?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
The motion to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance, Sections 1.2, 5.23, 5.1, recommended by General Counsel in a memorandum dated June 6, 2018, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Next item of business?
Okay, it's Public Hearing 2018-059, Special City Council Permit, 2018-003, Atlantic Road Number 171, MAP 73 Lot 26, pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.83 and Section 3.16B, for a building height in excess of 35 feet in the R20 district.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak in favor and recognize the applicant represented by counsel. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. I do have a slide projection, but there doesn't seem to be anyone other than us interested that I have presented to the council already, so it's your pleasure whether I spend a moment to set it up, or if you're happy to just look at what I've already presented to you.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, there are photographs that everyone has, so why don't you refer to those? That would be fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. The applicant is 171 Atlantic Road LLC, and the manager of the LLC, Brian Malanson, is here tonight. The engineer on the project is the Moran Cameron Group, Inc., and John Moran is also here tonight. The applicant is seeking to redevelop the former Ocean View Inn property into a residential development, and he intends to divide the property into five lots. Simultaneously with this application, he filed an A&R plan with the planning board and a variance application with the zoning board. And the variance application was for a front, excuse me, a front yard setback off of High Popple's Road for a small jut out on the building. The ZBA voted to, excuse me, approve the grant of the requested variance, and the planning board approved the A&R plan. All of the new lots will meet the requisite frontage and lot area. Mr. Malanson is before you tonight. Sorry.
Got a nurse here.
Mr. Malanson is before you tonight because he does not want to tear down the existing mansion at the corner of High Popple's and Atlantic Road. In order for the mansion to stay, he needs a height exception for the existing height, which is 38 feet. There is also a technical matter to present to you, Section 1.5.3B2. Mr. Malanson has not included building or floor plans as required for a proposed building in the application, because there is no proposed building. It's an existing building. If you interpret that section to require plans for an existing building, we'd ask for a waiver, because it is burdensome since nothing is changing, excuse me, with regard to this building. And there is a height calculation on the site plan which shows the height to be 38 Mr. Malanson intends to rehab the building into a single-family home. Once the lots are created, this building becomes non-conforming, because it exceeds the allowed height of 30 feet. If the City Council doesn't grant the height exception, the building will have to be removed, and it will be in violation of zoning. All of the buildings on the property except for this will be removed as part of the redevelopment. And with regard to the factors of 1.8.3, I'd like to briefly go through those. The social, economic, and community needs are served by this project. The applicant intends to restore the existing building to a single-family residence. It's in keeping with the similar larger homes in the area. The height of the building, which is currently non-conforming, will not change, and restoration will add value to this home and may help and maintain increased values of other homes in this area. It will also provide additional tax revenue for the city. Traffic flow and safety will be enhanced. One and a half off-street parking spaces are required in the R20 zone. This has a large driveway which can accommodate many more cars than that. And the change in use from a hotel conference center to a single-family home will greatly reduce the traffic that's entering and exiting this property. Utilities will be updated as necessary, and they will be adequate to meet the residential household needs, and there will be no additional public services required. With regard to neighborhood character and social structure, it is appropriate for this neighborhood. It's consistent with the neighborhood of larger remodeled homes in what is a mixed residential and commercial oceanfront area. There will be no new obstructions of views as the height is pre-existing and will not change. With regard to the natural environment, the qualities of the natural environment will be improved. The height is pre-existing, so there will be no change there, but except for this building, other buildings will be removed from the site, creating more permeable area, and the porch and the deck on this property will also be removed. The lot coverage for the home lot, which is Lot 1, will be approximately 12%, and in this area, 25% lot coverage is allowed. With regard to the potential fiscal impact, the improvement in occupation of this long vacant building will increase its value and perhaps those of its neighbors. I would suggest to you that it meets the standard under 1.8.3. From the analysis stated, it's clear that the request is in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. It will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the zoning district, or the city, such that it will outweigh the beneficial effects of preserving this historic building. It also meets the standard under 3.1.6, allowing the existing height of 38 feet is consistent with neighborhood character and the larger homes in this area. It will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood because of obstruction of views, overshadowing of other properties, the impairment of utilities, or other adverse impacts. The special permit is requested for an existing condition. It's been in place for over 100 years, and the building will not be, building height will not be increased by the project. As I said, there are no new obstructions of views. It will allow a historic building to be preserved and continue on with a useful life, and it remains true to the historic architecture of the existing building. Other than the height exception and the front yard variance that was granted by the zoning board, it meets all other dimensional requirements. Mr. Malanson has met with several neighbors to discuss the application, and he received a positive response to the desire to preserve this building. So we're requesting the special permit be granted to allow a height of 38 feet. And happy to answer any questions, and as I said, the engineer is here to answer any technical questions that you might have.
Thank you. We can do councilor questions right now on, for the applicant. So Counselor Memhard, did you have one?
Yes, Deb, thank you very much. This looks like a great project for a long dormant parcel, and congratulations and welcome to Gloucester. This, my question doesn't directly pertain to the special permit being sought tonight, but it would be very helpful for council information to understand what the applicant has gone through in terms of the review and revision of the FEMA flood maps, in terms of the velocity zones. Originally, parts of this property were deemed not to be accessible for emergency vehicles for having egress from Atlantic Road, and they sought alternative roadway access, and I believe you've been able to avoid that, and again, because it's a question that comes before us, a number of other parcels and properties. If we could understand what you've been able to achieve to advance this project to this point.
The FEMA, original FEMA map actually had the flood zone covering a substantial portion of the property.
Yes.
And that is shown on the plans, the site plan that was filed with the application. It has now been moved back after an amendment to Atlantic Road, so that there is a very small portion of the property that is affected by the flood zone, which means that the lots now can meet the lot area requirements of the city. And there'll be five lots that all meet that requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council questions? Counselor Heck?
Thank you, Deb. With this A&R, does this only allow two families by right?
There are, yes, two families by right. The plans are still in progress. Lots one through four, it's intended that they will be either single-family or two-family. And Lot 5, which is the larger lot, will be some semblance of multifamily, but that has not been determined yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, anybody else who wants to speak in favor? Anyone speak in opposition? Any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any council, any other council questions for the applicant? And I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Planning and Development Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council grant a special council permit, SCP 2018-003, to 171 Atlantic Road LLC, Brian Malanson, owner, for a property located at Atlantic Road Number 171, MAP 73, Lot 26, in the R20 District pursuant to GZO Sections 1.8.3 and 3.1.6, Section B, building heights in excess of 35 feet in the R20 District, for a pre-existing building with a height of 38 feet that is to remain unchanged. Further, the City Council is to waive the requirement of full-plan sets to be on file for special council permit, 2018-003. for special council permit, 2018-003. The project is found to be in harmony and intent of the Gloucester zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Moved and seconded. Any other commentary?
Yes, I'd just like to add that this is before us because when the applicant changed the lot lines of 171 Atlantic Road, the height of the existing building was no longer grandfathered under the zoning ordinance. And as a result, this applicant had to seek a height exception through a special council permit even though the height will remain unchanged. The special council permit meets the sixth criteria under Section 1.8.3 and is in harmony with the zoning ordinance. Many of the neighbors who have talked about this clearly support it, and one of the points that attorney Eliasen mentioned, that there's no obstructions of views, was very important to the people behind them. And I think also the fact that there will be less traffic is all very supportive, and I hope that councillors support our recommendation.
Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Councillor Heck?
Yes.
Councillor Holgrum? Councillor Blank?
Yes.
Councillor Lumber?
Yes.
Councillor Memhard?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
The city council vote to motion to grant a special city council permit, SCP-2018-003, for Atlantic Road Number 171, MAP 73 Lot 26 pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.83 and Section 3.16B for a building height in excess of 35 feet in the R-20 district, passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councillor Gilman, you have your hand up.
I just wanted to welcome Brian Malanson, our new resident. And I'm so impressed that you work so well with your butters, and I look forward to you living in our great community. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Brian. This is really, yes, go ahead.
Just as the ward councillor, again, I've been in touch with a number of your neighbors. This project is something that's welcomed with open arms. There's been a lot of concerns about past iterations of what was considered here, going back to the history of the property, but it seems like you're doing it right, and I just wanted to reiterate, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item is for council vote, Public Hearing 2018-054 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270.1, Resident Sticker Parking Only by adding Babson Street.
Councillor Blank, this is yours, so go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to ask for a continuance for two weeks. I've gone back and forth with some of the residents, and I'm going to have a neighborhood meeting sometime next week so we can hash this all out and get it corrected before we come back to council. So I apologize for the inconvenience, but just want to make sure we do this right. And so if we could put it on another agenda, that'd be great.
Councillor Cox?
I just want to talk about Babson because it turns out part of it is public and part of it is private. So I don't know if anybody else was, had been informed about that, but I had inquired. So I just wanted to share that bit of information. One of the suggestions that I had received when I inquired about it was that the public half could have signs put up, but the private half cannot. So, good luck.
I'm sure you'll sort that out. So do we need to vote on a postponement? Or we can just say, so we'll continue this until our next meeting? How's that?
Thank you for the information.
You're welcome. Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business in the homestretch.
Okay. The update of the Stage Fort Park Advisory Committee and the Magnolia Woods Oversight and Advisory Committee by City Council Representative Councillor Sean Nolan.
So Councillor Nolan, you have two hats here, if you choose to wear them both.
I'd like to start with the Magnolia Woods Oversight Advisory Committee. With winter coming, we're still waiting to see if we can get a gate installed at the lower half of the parking lot for access during the winter and non-snowy occasions for people to hike and have a place to park their car, other than the side of Western Avenue where hiking and the trails through the Gloucester Trail Stewards Association has become much more of an accessible product for people. The parking for the winter months would be excellent if we can get that worked on a little bit more. For the Stage Fort Park Advisory Committee, we've got a few hiccups going on with the Canons that we're trying to work with and always trying to work with some more grants to get the park up to par for the 400th anniversary. A very dedicated committee trying to work with these things. We put on a new member tonight, Craig. They're also looking into the damage left over from the cycle cross from this past race, which is pretty much the same as it's been most of the other years, with the thought of the park being changed around a little bit for the 400th. The idea of having the cycle cross is becoming less and less of something that looks like it's going to happen, and we do have some issues that we've gone through with the city and through planning and development for permitting, and to go back on what we're looking for to sign off on the actual bond.
Right. And so, yeah, and that was one of the reasons that we have, in the consent agenda, have an item to return to planning and development so we can have a full airing amongst ourselves about the use of the park, of that particular use, and there's some, you know, issue about how well they're able to repair it. Number two, you know, what the future of that park holds as we look at the 400th anniversary. So we'll get to that, and it'll all be before, so. Thank you, Councillor Nolan, for your report. Next item of business.
Councilor's request to the mayor.
Okay. So we'll start, do you want to start, Councillor Heck?
Couple of things. The first one I'd like to do is welcome wheelhouse co-working space to 189 Main Street in downtown Gloucester. There's 19,000 co-working spaces in the world, and we are about to have our first one. So the build-out will start this month, and with any luck, in January, the doors will open, giving people the opportunity to, you know, work there, not work in coffee shops, not work in their kitchen, and have a community place that's synergistic and could also represent startup companies for us, which is really terrific. Number two, I've been working for many months on a downtown Gloucester holiday window decorating contest, and it's come to fruition. We've got 73 participants, mainly on Main Street, and the following five groups have united to do unified promotion, the Chamber of Commerce, Discover Gloucester, Gloucester Downtown Association, Bridge Cape Anne, which is Corey Kukru, and me, the Ward Two councillor. So basically, as of Black Friday, which is the day after Thanksgiving, which is the 23rd of November, starting that day, there will be voting that will occur, and it's going to be done on Survey Monkey. And so the citizens of our community and people who come from outside our community will actually vote on what are the best decorated storefronts in five different categories. The idea being to get people to come to downtown Gloucester and come a lot and vote and see what we've got going on. So it's quite exciting. The voting starts on the 23rd of November. It goes through the 20th of December, so almost an entire month of voting. Then on the 21st of December, the winners will be announced. And from the 21st of December through the end of the year, the 31st of December, will be further promotion on who the winners was, all in an effort to get more and more people to shop locally. So I encourage you to come and look and vote and shop. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gilman?
I have three things. Number one, I wanted to report to the council that on Sunday, I attended a two-and-a-half-hour workshop on zoning at the Lanesville Community Center. It was organized by Val Nelson and the Lanesville Community Center Board, and it was quite a spirited event. There were 65 people there. Putin Fish talked about historical designations in general. Russell Hobbs talked about the history of Lanes Cove, and Val Nelson talked about zoning challenges. And then it was interesting, they actually invited the Rockport Planning Director, Planning Board Director, Herman Leje, to be on the panelists. Initially, I was kind of put off that they had invited the Rockport folks to be on the panel, and I was, you know, a listener, but it was actually quite helpful because he brought up some pretty unique processes of how they have been successful in putting through zoning that is basically kind of more of a bottoms-up approach to the neighbors. And it was pretty interesting. So I just wanted to report to you that I did have that meeting, and it was, it was interesting. But if you hear about it, I've let our P&amp;D department know about it, and I also made sure that Greg and Jill Cahill were aware of it. But it came up kind of quickly for me, and it was a spirited but very helpful meeting. So if anybody's interested in any of the handouts that they passed out, I'd be happy to send them to Joanne, and if you call her, I'm sure she'd be happy to send them around. But pretty interesting. The second thing I wanted to mention is that we do have a joint meeting between the Gloucester Historical Commission and Planning and Development scheduled for the 26th of November at 6:30. I believe it will be in the third-floor conference room. And it's a very concise agenda. Basically, we're going to be talking about Section 48D, which is the oversight of council, city council review with matters that come out of the Gloucester Historical Commission. Second, we are going to look at a general nomination process, not Dogtown, not Anasquam, just what are the steps of a general nomination process, and where is the appropriate time that the city council should weigh in? Okay, we are aware that there have been grants that have been given that are part of the nomination process, and we just want to do it very objectively and concisely in a collaborative way. So any councillor is welcome to come and sit in. I've also reached out to the Rockport Selectmen because they're working in concert with us on this, on one particular nomination that is in front of us, which is the Dogtown. But that's not going to be the purpose of the meeting. The purpose is clearly about the nomination process. And then the final thing is, I wasn't going to bring this up today, but I just wanted to, because it came up again in public comments, councillor Memhard took a crack at a really good outline for, kind of like a tool, to help private citizens on private roads understand how to use all of these new policies, the Betterment. It's very much designed for residents that are, just want to know where the tools are. And in the past, we've, we've given them the Betterment document, we've given them the petition, we fired them, a lot of this stuff. We've got the list of private roads. And typically, when I have someone ask me about this, which can be two or three times a week, I have to send four or five different emails out with all this different data. And I want to commend councillor Memhard for taking a good step forward to kind of create a user-friendly tool and also offer my assistance to kind of perfect it and then get feedback from Mike Hale and, you know, members of administration. So it's not a big deal, but I just wanted to, if it's okay with, with the committee, that we kind of work on this in an ad hoc and formal way. I think it's a, I think it's a great tool, and I appreciate the work that councillor Memhard has done after council. Councillor Nolan did such a great job in the Betterment, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Hara?
Thank you. I just want to speak, everyone probably has seen National Grid, where the vendors have been out on the streets pruning back trees. That's for the benefit of everyone, hopefully to reduce outages coming into the winter months. Obviously, no one wants to lose power. Most time, they lose power, they lose heat. I've received a number of complaints or concerns from constituents concerning that, but I think we need to look at the bigger picture. I know councillor Gilman had many concerns last year with outages. National Grid is, is out there pruning trees to reduce outages. They're not pruning trees for the benefit of just pruning trees. This is hopefully going to help us, the end users of the power that they're transmitting. Also, on November 28th, at the Magnolia Library, the Magnolia Library will be hosting a Red Cross blood drive from 2:00 to 7:00. They welcome you contacting 1-800-RED-CROSS to make an appointment. They need blood badly, and before people get caught up in the holidays, consider giving the gift of life on Monday, or Wednesday, November 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Holgrum?
Yes, I have two things. The first is that present Gloucester is open, our yearly pop-up shop on 186 Main Street in the Browns Mall building, so come and buy stuff made by local artists and artisans. And second, the Sawyer Free Library is hosting a visioning session for a new library on Thursday, the 15th. They're asking for residents to tell them what you want in a new library, so come and give the Sawyer Free Library your ideas. It is a kid-friendly event, and it is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Thursday, the 15th, at the Sawyer Free Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Memhard?
Yes, two items. Just the first, following up on what councillor Gilman had to say about facilitating our constituents' access to good information about what to do with their potholes. Right now, if you search the city's website, as best as I can tell, on item seven, you'll find under Municipal Services, "Is there a pothole in my street? Whom do I contact?" And it says, "You may contact the DPW to report this, or use the UC Click Citizen Response System." And that's great, as long as your road isn't private. And as we know, it's a little more complicated than that, so we need to get our city communication services up to par with the reality that we heard some of this frustration from Englewood Road residents about today. On another matter, I do have a request to the mayor to help, help me as the ward councillor to address a serious recent hit-and-run accident and a history of accidents on Main Street at the bottom of Haven Terrace between Speedway Welding and, yeah, Speedway Welding and the Napa Auto Parts Store. In spite of the crosswalk having been recently repainted, the nighttime hit-and-run that occurred there, which is still unresolved, unsolved, is, you know, there are a lot of busy businesses there, there are people at night crossing the roadway there. In an ideal world, we would have a flashing yellow pedestrian crossing light like we do at Gorton's and at McPherson Park and at the Armory. That's a long reach, but this, again, is a very busy street and intersection, and there is pedestrian traffic, both relating to the residential homeowners up on Haven Terrace, as well as the many businesses there. So we're looking for the mayor's help with the DPW, the police, and the Traffic Commission to see what can be done to avoid future potentially harmful accidents at this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nolan? You're okay? Councillor Cox?
All right, I'm going to give you an idea. There are flashing lights on Prospect Street that indicate a school zone. St. Anne's is no longer in play. Looking to moving those over to Roger Street.
Unless there's a new school coming.
Not that I'm aware of. Swing space, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.